Okay, welcome to the regular December meeting, December 1st. We'll call the order on April 6th. As our first order of business is public comments. We have some public here in the room. I don't see anyone on our main link. But from the manager, probably right, uh, public comments. So I don't think we're education, welcome to public education access. Some of their comments are like, they offer effective comments on collaboration programs. But protecting some of the other boards will not be the only part of public points. They're trying to comment about what it is. Such as you should be brought to school administration. So more will not respond publicly during public comments. Except for that, like, for public, uh, we can pick some off.
But seeing as we have no public with us today, I will move on. And we'll look for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 10th.
I'll make a motion for it.
I'll second that.
All of the members?
Hi.
Our small board here tonight, motion carries. Um, onto correspondence. My back is writing that you wanted to bring up.
Um, actually, you need to see some correspondences in my office. Um, I received a similar one, so I know it's in the packet. Um, you can pick up if you want, but it appears it now because of COVID. Um, and Jehovah Witnesses can't go door to door. They're mailing copies of the watchtower, so your copy is up here.
Okay, alright, well, that's, thank you.
Other than that, I have not gotten any, um, oh, and a cave journal. You get your own copy of the cave journal up there.
Oh, thank you, yeah, yeah, I'll check those out. Okay. We did hear from Matt Riska that everything was okay, okay with the, uh, oil patch. What was recently, right, already came out? Okay, um, while we are at correspondence, we'll also take a moment. I wanted to say thank you very much to Mayor Buck for the Christmas packages. Um, and I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to each of our board members for giving up your time and your heart and soul and coming out on your birthday or, um, in the evening and putting it all in and making these obvious meetings. I so appreciate all that you do for our town and our children and our future. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
So I guess it could have gone under correspondence too, but we got a lovely message today saying that they are coming tomorrow to repair the slide.
Oh, really?
Yes.
That's so great, yay!
Yes, so that was great news. Um, and then there are a couple of things we need to take some action on, but I just wanted to update the board. Um, we have been incredibly diligent to the point that one of the surveys Lauren put out said that we are over-communicating. But we have tried our damnedest to make sure that everyone understood the protocols and practices and expectations in order to keep us safe at the hotel and maintain an in-school model. And I have to say, by and large, people have been unbelievably cooperative. Um, erring on the side of caution, gee, you know, I, I, I didn't feel good today. I'm gonna get a test, I'm gonna keep my kid out just in case until I'm sure. People have been absolutely wonderful. Um, but we've had a situation that evolved over the last two hours, the last day or so, where we became aware of a family that had multiple cases in the home and weren't communicated to the school. But Torrington Health Department is wonderful and they worked with us to, um, get the action that we needed to have taken. We've been in communication with the, um, with the family and they understand that their students need to stay at home. Um, and I have called all of the other children in that class to assure them that, um, their children are not at risk. The, the child that comes to school here was not a positive case. That child will be out quarantined till the holiday to make sure that there's no, no risk of exposure when they return to school. And, um, we will continue to monitor the situation and follow up with that family. Um, but, you know, news travels fast and, you know, we've heard it not from the family, not from the Health Department, but through the vigilance of, of citizens in Norfolk so that we could investigate it. So we're very grateful to have gotten that news and addressed it as quickly as we could have and, um, we'll continue to do so. But if you hear word out and about that, oh my gosh, there's a COVID case at the hotel. There is no COVID case here, we've not had a positive case. Um, we do have two staff members out because they had contact with someone in their family who is possibly or is diagnosed, and so they're out for the quarantine period. So, um, we have been, you know, very vigilant and our staff has been incredibly, you know, cooperative in that way as well. So again, if you have any questions or hear anything, please call Lauren or myself because, um, you know, better safe than sorry. And we never take it as, oh my gosh, people are, you know, telling tailgown people. This is a really serious thing and if we're not aware of a case that could impact us, it could blow up on us. So really, um, we appreciate that and we'll keep you informed as we move forward. But at this point, I think we are in a very good place. Any questions?
I have a question about, I know we just switched back to 3:30 and I was kind of concerned that it was going back to 3:30 after Thanksgiving and I know that there's a lot more kids who are quarantining because of Thanksgiving. Um, has there been talk about maybe going back to 3 o'clock in January or?
Well, I, the talk has been like, are we gonna have to go remote? I don't think that extra half hour is gonna make a difference in terms of any contamination. And our concern is that we lost so much time in the spring. We don't know if we're gonna go out again this year and we just wanna maximize as much instructional time as we can possibly grab. So I don't believe that there's any added risk by extending the school day.
Well, I'm just thinking for the teachers, because that was their time to reach out to the families.
Well, they will continue to reach out, but what we are telling parents, and I'm glad you reminded me, Ginger, that right now we are on an in-school, totally in-school model. We are accommodating students remotely who are out because of COVID reasons or medical reasons or some extenuating circumstances. But we are no longer offering a remote and an in-person. Our teachers cannot do it. We're fortunate that the children who are out are scattered through the building and our teachers will have daily contact. Um, and the kids who are out are now, you know, mostly, you know, practice, they tune in to, you know, remotely. Um, so I, I, I do think we're, we're in, in, in good shape there.
And I, I think that now that we, I think it was really helpful to have that time in the beginning because teachers didn't know how that was going to work. But now that teachers have had so much experience, not everyone, because some teachers have not had many distance learners, but, um, teachers have had experience now being able to deliver instructions to the whole group. And there are times where, you know, the, the at-home learners are asking a question to their teacher or another student perhaps, and it doesn't take an inordinate amount of time. It's easy to, so there is some interchange during that instructional time, not to the detriment of the students that are in the classroom by any means, but it seems to have evolved into a, you know, a teaching and learning environment that is more responsive in the moment. And when, before we made the transition back to, um, the 3:30 dismissal, I had a conversation with each of the teachers to get a sense of how were the students utilizing that time, how much time was needed, how, you know, frequently did those students show up? And the feedback I got from teachers was, it's nice, it was nice to have that time in the beginning, but, you know, I, I may only need to talk with this student one time, you know? And so I, I think, I appreciate your concern about that, but, um, because the teachers are working very hard, but I, I think we've got a lot of good information to say thank you for that, you know, time initially, but now we're, we're putting things into practice and no longer necessarily need that time.
So they don't have to have like half-hour daily check-ins?
No.
Teacher time?
Nope.
Yeah, they're, they don't need half that time.
They don't, yeah.
That's, I was just checking on that, because I want the teachers to feel, I mean, I'm saying an extra half an hour now every day.
Yeah.
Some teachers stay till four, some stay till five.
Yeah.
Depending on what they wanna prep here and get done.
Yeah, but I think that people don't, we haven't made that a responsibility to tack on to the end of the day. I think that by and large, people are able to interact in a meaningful, quick way if there are questions for those at-home learners, something like that.
Yeah, and to that point too, Ginger, it's one of the reasons we're really kind of holding the line. We can do this and teachers can do this if we have a few, uh, remote in short term. If it turns into a thing where we have multiple people saying, oh, I think, you know, I just wanna be careful I'm not with, and we have people just choosing a remote model, then we won't be able to maintain that, that balance. And I think the message has to be clear that this is a safe learning environment. The minute that it's not, we will go remote. So, you know, um, we, we are holding that line and offering remote learning just to those children who need it because of medical quarantine or, I guess, if we have some really extenuating circumstances in families, then we are certainly accommodating them.
Any other questions about the remoteness of any of that topic? How much lead time is required? Like, so if a, if a child needs to quarantine, do they need to take, like, two absences before they can start, like, their remote learning, or is it like?
It depends on the clarity of the information. So sometimes we get disparate information, which then says, um, you know, we don't need to set up distance learning for you, your child can come back to school. And then when we get other information, we say, oh, okay, well, apparently your child does need distance learning. So it, it depends on the, you know, the, the timeline and the information that we get, but we, um, you know, ask for 24 to 48 hours to facilitate the remote learning when it is approved, um, because some students have multiple teachers that they have to connect with. But if it's a, you know, there are many times where, you know, we can turn around in less than 24 hours and have that child up and running, you know, in a remote environment. So it really is a case-by-case basis depending on what that child's school day looks like and the information that we get from the families.
And Lauren, when we're requiring the 24 to 48-hour period, parents have done what they need to do, are we counting those as excused absences or are we counting them as remote orders from that first day?
That's a good question that I'm not entirely sure of. And we're not penalizing students when they, I, those, because they're, I, I would say that, you know, we would count those as, yeah, we're counting those as excused absences. Um, but they would be absent, you know, if they're not available for remote learning.
Okay.
But nobody's being penalized for that. And I think that by and large, parents have been very understanding that it takes a little bit of organization to make this happen for kids.
I'm hearing one, I'm hearing one. Oh, no. What is happening? I just wanna make sure, because I think sometimes the message is a little mixed. Like, you wanna make sure, probably people are, like, having a bunch of caution. But we, we also wanna make sure that they don't overreact to take, take, you know, the distance learners, is that, is that the?
Well, if parents are calling and saying, you know, I'm just feeling a little bit uneasy. I've heard that Norfolk has more cases, I see that the humidity is going up and red, I think I want my child to be a remote learner. We're saying that is not, we're not set up for a hybrid, you know, choice because of those circumstances. We're an in-person model. If a parent calls and says, you know, um, we were with some family members and, you know, no one's been positive, but, you know, they know that they're not doing well, we're a little bit uneasy. We wanna err on the side of caution and keep our child home for 10 days, we say fine. As long as it's connected to some reasonable, you know, connection to a concern about being exposed or being positive. But if the parent is just saying, you know, I, you know, I just don't feel comfortable, you know? That is not really a legitimate reason for not being there. So because initially when the governor said, when schools reopen, parents, if you don't think it's safe and you don't wanna go back, you don't have to go back. They'll provide remote learning. They didn't tell us how we're gonna do that, you know, but in any event, we were fortunate that we were accommodated in very few. And within a relatively short period of time, all but two students are back in person and we are now fully included. It's been, um, you know, pretty much shown that we're safe, that it's not, you know, this question mark that we thought it might have been in the fall when the governor said, no, everybody's just gonna go back, everybody open up. So we feel very safe, we feel that there is no risk here as long as we're all following the protocol. And so we're an in-person model and we cannot tax teachers or can't be hired extra staff to provide an alternative remote, um, program for kids who are gonna be longer-term out because they're not comfortable. And like I said, the minute that we think that it's not safe for one child or any child, we will go remote. We just don't, we, we do not have the capacity to offer two models. And, um, at this point, we're an in-person, we're an in-person model and make accommodations for medical difficulties.
Okay, um, does anybody have any other questions or comments about that? Okay.
Okay, so you had a list of dates that, for board meetings that we need to, um, have, take action on. And I believe Kathy set this up to follow what we're currently doing. So it's the first Tuesday of the month at 6 o'clock. Um, hopefully you've got a chance to look over your calendars and see if there are any conflicts and if there's any discussion or whatever. And we have, do we need a vote tonight, Kathy, or can we hold off?
No, we can hold it, this has to be on file, known as, come on, by the end of January.
By the end of January, okay, so.
Okay, so everyone please take a look at those. Uh, if anything seems way, way off track, please pause them. And on January, we'll finalize it.
Okay, good enough. And then we have the calendar. I, we, of course, as a reference, the regional and the advanced calendar. But again, I hope you take a chance to look over the calendars and look at the graph that we are recommending for next year. Again, it pretty much models what we've done this year. The April break and the winter break are aligned with region seven as well as advanced, even though we're no longer required to follow the advanced calendar for that. Some of, I, I believe, is it, um, we've said are maybe coming, are they coming back before Labor Day? One of them are. But because Labor Day is terribly late and we would still get out on June 9th, he is, we may be, you know, kind of preemptive assumption that our families would rather extend the summer a little bit longer and come back after Labor Day. Teachers would come back Monday and Tuesday. Kids would have a three-day week and then a four-day week and then a five-day week. But again, those are up for discussion and, um, debate?
Is this gonna be voted on this evening?
It could be, it does not have to be.
Does it have any concerns out, is there something that's concerning?
The only thing I wanted to do, um, based on, um, a previous year and some feedback from teachers is in March, when we have conferences, perhaps, um, moving the conferences that week to Wednesday and Thursday versus Monday and Tuesday.
Why is that? Do they, what's, what's that, is it just that they get a little more time, they don't come straight from the weekend?
Well, it gives parents a little bit more time to look at the report card that goes home on Friday. Um, and I think that that can be helpful to families.
Okay.
And Lauren, I know you had mentioned to me at one point, we didn't follow up on it, but, um, something to the effect that, you know, um, the, let me put it this way. Do teachers have enough time for conferencing with the one-half-day dismissal? Is that the one evening conference time?
Well, that was another thing that, um, we discussed. Some of the, you know, we have two classrooms that are quite large and, uh, you know, those teachers on the evening dismissal day, um, you know, began their conferences at 4:30 and didn't leave, you know, until maybe 7:30 or 8 o'clock. And it, you know, it's a long workday, 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. Um, and, you know, there are, uh, other districts in the region that do, you know, a half-day on evening conferences. And I think that that's just supportive to, um, you know, teach, teachers want to be clear and, um, concise and when they have a little bit of a break to, you know, eat, relax a little, you know what I mean, take care of their personal business, I think they're more alert in those evening conferences. So I think that, that, you know, would be something that, um, I think could be helpful.
Well, and part of the, um, issue we have is that we have a class of 16 and then we have a class of six. So, you know, for the teacher who had six students, but one early dismissal day in the evenings would be more than ample time. Um, we run into a little bit of a, you know, crunch when it's a teacher that has 16 or 17 kids in their class. So, you know, we can, you know, either consider, you know, the second earlier dismissal and if that's not the case, then I think we would need to look at making some kind of accommodation for teachers who have double the case load in conferences. So we can talk about that between now and January and you can chew on that as well and come back with some decision about that.
And I think the other thing is that we'd love to be able to offer more times in the evening because more frequently than not, parents want evening conferences now that they're working. So to have, um, you know, a little bit, uh, you know, to have a little bit more time so you could perhaps go later in the evening without, you know, working for 13 hours, I think would be respectful.
Okay.
If, if, if this is the officially distributed calendar, um, can the, the, the 22nd and the 23rd in November and March be directed?
I'm not following what was that again?
In, in, in March and November, they've, um, they've got a T H after 23 and 22.
Oh.
I see.
Well, the 22nd, the 22nd and the 23rd. That's a catch, again, you type space for me, you hear the day changes and all of a sudden. Good catch, John.
Also Kathy, on the board of the board meetings, um, April 4th to the April 6th.
Okay, and how about, um?
Because April 4th is a Sunday.
How about, do you notice the January 26th? Is that, do you guys have that scheduled? Did we schedule the January, the year before? So is it 26th? Oh, it wasn't, I just looked at it because it's so far away. And then we have 26th and then is the 2nd, so they're back to back, right?
Yeah, it's already in here for January 26th.
Okay. Yeah, so the 5th and then the 26th, I was trying to, why I didn't do it for the 19th, why I didn't say it for the 19th? Because there's something going on.
Right, and then we have the next week, February 2nd is another board meeting.
Yeah.
And then two weeks later on the 16th.
16th, right.
Are any of these a special budget meeting?
The, the second one, the 2nd one, the 2nd one, you've got to, right?
Should we say that at the budget or not put it?
I usually don't, I put it, I manage it.
Well, they're usually, they're, they're put it as, like, well, there've been many years we haven't used a second meeting.
Right.
So, um, I think, you know, we want people to come out and be interested in the budget. So if we had the second one as the budget one, people might not come or pay attention to the first one where really that's the meat of it.
Right.
So, um, certainly we can, you know, if we opt or we need them at that time, we can make sure it's publicized that those second meetings will be expressly for the purpose of discussing the budget.
You know, I was just curious, because if it, you know, says it's only a regular meeting and I mean cancel a meeting and people are like, well, you say it's a regular meeting. But then if your placeholder is a budget meeting, then maybe it should be placed, like, not listed as a regular meeting, but, I, I mean, I'm still new to this.
Well, like, I think they're usually, usually in January, we start other discussions anyway, right? So January 5th will be budget and then 26th would just be the extension of it.
Is it not, is there, I'm sorry, we've discussed it before, but is there a reason why it's not January 19th?
I don't know, that's what I question, I don't know why we did that. Like, why did I do that last year, I have no idea. Because it's such a big space, I mean, we could change it, it would just be a special meeting.
Oh, right, because it's already?
Yeah, it's already posted. The January dates are already posted.
Well, because I think, historically, I think historically we've done, like, that second January meeting towards the, like, I think there has been a, a larger gap, like, a three, like, towards the end of the month, I think.
I don't, do you remember why?
I don't remember why or what the rationale was, but I don't, I think it was like three weeks after the meeting. I don't think it was consistent, like, two weeks later.
Okay.
Right, now we're the first Tuesday, so we got the last January and then it's the first Tuesday. We gotta go to the 2nd, so we're back to back.
Right, but again, we haven't used that January meeting in a while, so it's just.
And does everybody, everybody still wants the first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah, well, it's not changed.
We're not changing that.
We're, we've got it now.
That's true, I'm aware of your committee, so, yeah, okay, okay.
Well, over that, Lauren.
All right, so I'll change April 6th. And I can bring it back next month if you wanna approve it down or you wanna just approve it.
Well, I mean, should we wait for Sally and, and Donna and, maybe here? If we're not under any pressure, we might as well wait.
No, we'll, we'll just have to approve a next meeting because Ben has to go out.
Just for my, so we have to do it, I mean, and we have to do the calendar, the, I mean, I have no objection personally to the addition of another half-day. I have a feeling that Sally may have a different thought about that half-day piece for, uh, the conferences. Um, and it seems fine to move to the Wednesday, Thursday, I still, I can't imagine any difference there. So maybe if we can wait until next month. Does anybody else have any other thoughts on the things that Lauren had said about the little changes to the calendar or any other changes to the school calendar that they want to know?
Well, it's also, um, another, like, pro, you know, Northwestern has early releases on their two days for middle school conferences, so we could just be like, you know?
Same line.
Same line, back.
When are theirs?
Theirs are the 15th and the 16th, um, November.
Okay. Oh, we're in March here. So if you're looking for half-days, I guess you'd be looking for half-days, the 22nd and the one in March too. So in November and in March.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I don't have any objection to that, I mean, do, how, what do you guys feel? I mean, if it helps, the, I feel like those parent-teacher conferences are hugely valuable. It, you know, keeps parents involved, it lets everybody know what's going on. Um, I love the time, like, you know, an expansive amount of time to talk to the teacher. And the more the teacher can, uh, inform parents about what's going on, it seems like that can wholly hugely benefit the children, so.
And I think there's a lot of work and preparation that go, you know, having, having lived a day, elementary school teacher for most of my life. Um, I know of the preparation that goes in, into that. And so, you know, to give them the two half-days, I, I agree, it would be helpful and I, I agree that, you know, they're very beneficial meetings.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't, and also students who have, like, other special services, like, if they see a specialized teacher or something and they come in, it's even less time to talk to the regular higher teacher. I'm just, when they get nine minutes and you're trying to meet with three, two or three people, it, it definitely makes everything very rushed.
Yeah.
Instead of really being able to process how the student. Instead of really being able to process how the student is doing.
Yeah.
Based on their regular classroom and the height.
If we had the two early dismissal days for students and gave teachers more time, they could look at certain students in their class and say, you know, well, for this kid with three people, we're going to schedule, you know, a double conference period. So there'd be some more flexibility to give, you know, those particular instances more time than to try to squish a meeting with two or three people into the one period.
Why don't we go ahead and make that change then? Because, I mean, it makes sense, you know, and then also, you know, we want the teachers to give generously of their time. We should be responsive in the same, you know, in the same way that if they, if that's helpful to them, that they have a little downtime, a little prep time there in the afternoon. We do it for this upcoming March as well. We have to review that calendar in a separate meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Or can we not change, we have changes for that March? 20, 21?
We, we could certainly have put it on the agenda and have a board vote to add an early dismissal day in March. That would be no problem.
Okay, let's do that for January, like January's meeting.
Yeah.
I feel like we've done that previously.
We, we did it the year that I asked you to have an early dismissal day on the last day of school. We did that in the same calendar year.
Sorry, I meant to interrupt. So the family wants to make the motion to change the dates in March on this calendar. Do we have to make a motion or?
No, this is just discussion time, so we're good.
Okay.
So that will bring back a, you know, a revised draft in January, but it will have the March conference days moved to the 23rd and the 24th. And both of the conference days in November and March will be indicated as early dismissal days for students. Any other changes or questions about what we are proposing here? I'll just point out that in the past, the board has been very reluctant to go past the third week in June. So we, we put down in the bottom that, you know, the first six makeup days will be June 7th, 10th to the 17th, and the additional days will be made up in April. Again, you know, when we get to that point, there can be discussion and you could change your mind, but for starting out, we always want to give parents and teachers the heads up that depending on the harshness of a winter and what we need to deal with, April vacation may be at risk. But I just wanted to point out that we only added the six days, which would get us up to the 17th. Sometimes there are 10 or 11 days between the last day of school and getting into that third week, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that we're all on the same page there.
Okay.
So it would mean that they would have to use six, six snow days before we were going to be April vacation. But in this calendar, if you'll notice, April vacation is extra long because Good Friday is tacked on, so if we had to shorten it by a day or two, there would still be a nice spring. But hopefully by April 22, parents can plan that Disney vacation or, you know, travel or do something, but at least they know that there's a chance we'll have makeup days there. We've also used some of our COVID grant money. We are now going to have two additional water bottle filler stations. We'll have one down here by the gym, one on the first floor. We already have one on the second floor thanks to the sixth graders last year. And we are also ordering an additional camera, I believe, for the, two more. Okay, one for the cover playground. Okay, both for the cover playground, okay. And I did call Matt after last meeting and ask him to look into the lighting out on the playground at night to see if we couldn't put more like, more of a stadium light up there to give it, you know, better visibility down there. He said he would check into that and he would see, check into the blinking light, but I haven't heard back from him. And this morning, I can see a blinking light down there. Does anybody recall seeing that? It's just totally gone. That's so strange.
I wonder, yeah, that whole, that's kind of strange. I mean, so.
What I hear is definitely all them blinking, but I was told that that one wasn't blinking, but now it's actually gone. I'll call them back and follow up on that.
For the lights on the playground? Where do you call them from? Could you just talk to them about whether there's any possibility of adding additional lights? I mean, I know some bigger backup lights on the existing pole would be of fixing that slide and the impact.
Their name for the slide?
Yeah, I mean, so the expense would happen.
Oh, so we don't want to have to keep it?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, just more.
Yeah.
Just to keep that, keep that space up if you could, right?
Sure.
I really do think it's a huge drop, that, that slide, drop to our town.
In the, in the Economic Development Committee meeting, is that what it was? Matt mentioned that he contacted the DOT about that. But it takes them forever to like respond. Yeah, so.
For a long time, about one night. Like, remember there was, I know for years, they worked on trying to get one of them like on a remote. I mean, and I could, the years are coming all meshing together, so I really don't know exactly when that was, but I know for a while neither one of, I just don't think either one of them was.
Yes.
Okay, but it's a year.
Yes, I remember that. At least the sign is there. Yeah, they can see while you're driving up to the school. Okay.
Well, that's all I've got, unless you've got questions for me. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, Lauren?
Well, folks have put a little bit of a damper on, you know, extracurricular fun things at school, so our updates are a little limited, but I did want to say thank you to our teachers and students and John for the Veterans Day video. If, you know, if you had a chance to look at it, it was really, you know, professional quality videomanship. And, you know, I just really appreciate it and, and think that people got a lot of joy out of watching that. The virtual parent teacher conferences were very well attended and many teachers commented on how grateful parents are for all the, you know, work that teachers are doing and, you know, how things are going in spite of the pandemic. And so I think teachers, you know, felt very positive about interactions with parents and the virtual conferences were just as effective. And I think that, that was, again, it was nice that they were very well attended. We are moving forward with the Holiday Fair and the music teachers are going to work on a winter concert similar to the Veterans Day video. That probably because of the short turnaround between Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and then the winter holiday, they're thinking about a January publication of the winter concert and looking forward to that. So we also had a couple of students move and that's reflected in our enrollment. But we're at 76 students with one Coolbrook student in pre-K and two distance learners in Ms. Coughlin's intermediate class. Do you have any questions for me?
And just an FYI, we have, Mary Patton has been like really great about getting parents who are leaving to complete an exit survey and mostly all of our parents moved. So I've been tracking the data on that and to this point, every family that has left has left either because they bought another house in another district and it said on the survey, "We would have loved to stay here, but we couldn't find affordable housing." And then one of our families moved because of a job relocation. So, you know, at the end of the year, at some time on a regular basis, I'll be happy to just share that with you because as the numbers go down, I think it's important for us to, you know, know why our families are leaving. And, you know, it's good to have the data to support what we have been saying all along, that people aren't leaving, enrollment isn't declining because people are dissatisfied with hotel. By and large, it's because of they've lost their rent, they need a new rent, or they're able to buy a house, but they can't afford to buy a house in North Fork. Or, you know, they need to move their rent and there's not a rent that allows their tax. So we're just trying, I guess, to formalize that information and have it at the ready to respond to any public questions or concerns about why our enrollment decreasing. Plus, the people in North Fork just need to have more families and that would help the problem too.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, Mary. I continue the Veterans Day video is fantastic and I love the virtual parent teacher conferences personally. I think it works great for our life.
Well, I think that for some family, I, you know, I wondered if we had greater turnout because of the convenience, particularly in the afternoon. If you needed to take a, you know, 15 minute break while you were at work. We had a number of, you know, one parent who was at work even in the evening and their employer graciously let them take time out from their day. So I think that when you cut down on the travel time to school, the moving around, you know, the chunk of time that you, you know, need to devote just to getting to the building, this was a, and some people like to come to the building, that's not what I'm saying, but just to like have a high level of engagement from our families. This might be a, you know, a, again, a benefit of the requirements that we have. You know, you kind of think outside the box and then you can do things differently and then you find, hmm, this might actually, you know, benefit everyone.
Yeah.
As an option, not a mandate, you know, moving forward.
Okay. Okay, let's see, we're in the now. We're in our standing room. So let's see, Donna's not here, but I can tell you from the personnel negotiations committee that we are moving forward with our teacher negotiations. We're, invited them now, we meet again tomorrow?
Yeah.
It seems like all the time, quite often. But it should be over soon. Okay, and then pass that. Policy you want to report on the meeting today?
Oh, yes, you have in front of you two policies for a first read. The student misconduct. And we are looking to revise the current policy that is there. Reflecting the, reflecting guidelines, we can no longer take recess away as a, as a privilege. So we have revised the sentence of a loss of privilege to not include recess or any activity that's critical to the educational experience of the child. And then just deleted the corresponding line after that that was also part of taking something away. So we've just revised those lines. Otherwise, it's the similar policy that we have. Then the other one is the new policy.
We did that with appropriate supervision to the penalty.
Oh, I didn't add that in there?
So in the, in the bullet point?
I'm sorry.
Bullet point, their short-term removal from the class with appropriate supervision. So the, the challenge is to be.
Yes.
In the hall.
We'll take a walk.
Run around.
The cameras down the supervision?
Well, that reflects another piece of legislation that said students cannot be sent out of class, you know, without a plan for someone to be supervising them. And I'm not for sure they had those telling lines when they made that one. You know, some, you know, some of the larger schools, a child is sent out of class and then things get going, get busy, and where's the kid? They don't know the kid went home, the kid here. So again, but I think it's almost worth changing the policy to add that line.
And then the other one, that's the first we distributed tonight, is a new policy that's an optional, but since it's part of our, what we do, it's on the social and emotional learning. And we basically took the language straight from CADE. We opted as the committee to, well, the two members of us that were there, John and I opted for the alternate on the first page to include the paragraph that's highlighted there that refers to the whole child to kind of mirror one of our goals. We thought that was pretty appropriate, so we chose that language. As well as the, on the fourth page where there's also an opportunity for alternate language, we chose the paragraph instead of the bullet points. It was a, like, kind of softer, more concise statement as opposed to, this is what we're doing. So that's a first read for this month as well.
Okay, thank you very much. So we don't have a policy to vote on unless, do we have? Yes, okay. Okay, great, thank you. Unless you have something that you'd like to report from the board of finances, John? Have my, your policies are coming in.
Hi, did you bring my, my notes from it? But they, they did talk about the roof. Matt mentioned the cost of it and so board finance now knows what the, what the date is and what it costs per foot, so they're ruminating on that.
Okay. I know the roof has been, that's come up quite a bit in the last 10 years or so. Is there something, is it just, it's just a timing thing, right? There's something you leave or something you have a problem with that. Okay. Okay, unless there's some other committee chair who would like to report on your move to unfinished business?
I just wanted to call to your attention the board goals paper that I left on your, on your table. This was, is to reflect the, our workshop last month. Just tried to, I worked with Mary Beth to try to reflect the conversation that we had and to put things down in a way that I think would be really, really good, really strong goals and reflect how I think our, our boards used to be feeling. I know you just got this tonight, so what I would really like you to do is take some time and read through it, come to our next meeting with any response to it or changes to it. But I really want to focus on these goals and kind of hold ourselves accountable to them so that we can then, you know, in a few months, do our own due diligence and looking back at our goals and see how we did to get there. So I want to just to make sure we take enough time to have them be exactly as we want. And by our next month, I want to sort of solidify them and have everybody agree that this is how, and, you know, that everybody agrees that's what we're going for. So please pay special attention to that. And if it's useful to you, would it be helpful if I were to send you a digital copy of it? I like to have digital copies. Does anybody have anything to say about that now, before we move on?
Okay, so we have already addressed the school calendar and the meeting schedule. So, yes, did you just finish what you were doing? I was going to say, are there any other, are there any other new additions?
If you haven't seen it yet, on the Pride Department's Facebook page, our student Chase, who's left name out of them.
A little, a little guy?
Yeah.
Gomez.
Okay, he, he lived the Christmas tree after a fashion.
Oh.
On, on a Saturday. We, we couldn't have a crowd, so it was videotaped, and the, the, the video was on, on the Pride Department's Facebook page.
Oh, great.
Thank you. So the sixth grade across twenty twenty-one is doing fundraising through Customing right now. With my stocks merch, merching days. I want to thank some of the people here have already purchased some items, and I'll thank you guys for that. We've had a pretty good response. We just had some more orders actually during the meeting, so let me just check.
How long is that going?
It's going until the sixth. I could only do two weeks so that they print them all and we can get them by Christmas. And if I extend them, then they won't be here by Christmas.
Okay.
They have print time and they shipping time. So we need to start and stopping. I don't know what's wrong with me.
Yeah, you said, oh, I'm gonna do that, I don't want to do that.
Right, and unfortunately, because the way I made each of the campaigns, I have to do one item at a time there. Except for now that they helped me fix the issue with the blue sweatshirts.
Yeah, I saw that, so you get
So you get a blue sweatshirt in like an extra large, like, size. Like, I picked the, I picked that, and then all of a sudden, it's like, when are you gonna leave all the small, medium, large? But, so I called Customing, they were really great, and they helped, so this isn't a final number because once, since three of the items have the same logo and everything, and the same white color, it's one, it's one item. So we raised, oh, three hundred ninety-six dollars so far. Right, sold ninety items with fifty-five supporters. And it looks like the kid's mask is not a big seller, because there's only two, so that might not print. And the war bottles, which I thought would sell more, people didn't want clothes, only five, I need thirty-three more to print them. You know, I figured if we got close, we'd use some funds from the sixth grade money. But I mean, we can still sell the war bottles, I think those might, we could probably sell throughout the year.
What do you know?
On Customing, there's, oh, Mary Pat sent out the link to everyone. So you should have on the mailing list anymore. It's customing.com forward slash fundraising forward slash boat hell twenty twenty-one. Right? Maybe it'd be a good idea to have another reminder set out from like the fourth or something like that, it says Yeah, I did, I did one Friday, yeah, I did one Friday, got a lot of responses, and I was like, I don't want to send it out again, and then again. Yeah, right, right. So I figured like on the fourth, I was gonna send another blast, and I was actually gonna, do you know who, I'm sorry, this is do you know who does the mail, the emails from Norfolk? From Dawn Whalen. It is not from the hub. Oh, that's, the other one is Libby Manager, is the other one. Oh, Libby Board doesn't? So, I'll email Libby and ask her to include that. I guess I can ask Dawn too. It might be Leslie who actually puts them out, I, I, but I know Libby's involved with it. Leslie Bannister, Leslie Watkins? Leslie Bannister. I will, I'll ask her. That's against them. Yeah, I would, I would definitely ask Libby, I don't Is it working?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I, I posted it on social media and stuff, it's hard to get it out and everything, but so if, if anyone watches this and wants to support the sixth grade, since their fundraising efforts are going to have to be pretty minimal this year. There's a lot of stuff they can't do, so. But it's so cool to have Norfolk merch, so, interesting. And I want to thank Aunt Servo for doing the graphic design, and listening to my crazy ideas about what I want it to look like. Happiness, happiness, you know, so thank you. We do all of this together as a community, that's, that's for sure. Any, anything else? All right, well, it is just about seven o'clock, and we're looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm looking to adjourn.
All right, all in favor?
You, you won, good meeting. You should, uh, bow down. Are these going to stay yours? It's a nice little place to be going right to the way, it's like a white and I just pop them, I say, okay, and then we'll leave this set up the way it is, because we'll be meeting here again tomorrow. Okay.